All right, uh, folks, my name's Chris Todi. I want to welcome you all to the January meeting of Central Arkansas Astronomical Society. Glad you all are all here tonight in this wonderful, warm weather. And do we have any new people here tonight? Actually, I see quite a few. If y'all want to go around and we'll start right over here and introduce yourself, please, sir. Welcome, Daniel. Welcome, Jack. Welcome, Jonathan.
I
Thank you, Cindy. We're glad you're here. All right, is anybody working on any new projects right now that they'd like to share with anybody? All right, Malcolm. All right, um, real quick announcement, uh, go ahead, sir. Well, good luck with that. I hope it, I hope it works out extremely well for you, sir. All right. That's perfect. That is perfect. Yes, Darcy, we would like, we'd like to contribute on that. Darcy, did you have any announcements? Okay, I didn't know if there's any new announcements on the eclipse or what was going on with that right now. Okay, okay. All right, uh, we've got, uh, yes, sir. Has anybody looked at the comet yet? We've got one taker. That's awesome. Supposed to be the brightest right around February, the, the, the end of January, first, first week in February, if I'm correct. All right. I guess everybody's, is there any other announcements? Other than I'm gonna put a reminder out there. It is January, it's time for your annual dues. If you think you may have or may have not paid them already, you can reach out to Jim, he'll get you all set. And, uh, once again, we're glad you all are all here tonight. And Rocky, would you like to start out with our first presentation?
So, uh, this is a constellation of the month, and usually we have a short thing like that. In this month, it's on Taurus. And this is a, um, a slide, uh, actually was a trading card or a card, there were sent of these cards issued back in eighteen twenty-five. And Uranius mirror is what it was called. And this is just one of the cards, this is Taurus, of course, used to, if you had a, um, an atlas, it would have pictures in the atlas like this. Nowadays, you just get stars, but it's nice to look at these. But you can see, uh, there's a V right here, which is, uh, depicts Taurus' nose and, uh, the horns. And we'll go, we'll go through all that, the Pleiades. Okay. Yes, Jim. Hey, Jim, how many, how many are on soon? Okay. So I guess that's what we get. So anyway, that's, that's from Uranius mirror. And, uh, Taurus Bull is one of the most ancient constellation, there's a, actually, an early record in a cave, and I'll, I'll show you a picture of that from seventeen thousand years ago. And it shows Taurus with the Pleiades in, in the right place. So it's been around a long time, Taurus Bull has. Uh, it's a zodiacal constellation, the second, the second, uh, constellation in the zodiac behind Aries is you'd normally consider first. Taurus is the Latin name for bull. It's best seen in the winter, it's part of the winter hexagon, and I'm gonna show you the winter hexagon in just a second. Uh, it's known for two, two star clusters. Uh, I mean, it's known for quite a bit, but two star clusters are two of the main objects, one of them is the, uh, Hyades. And, uh, Alder Baron is in the Hy- in the Hyades, it's actually not part of it, but it's in there. And the other one is the seven sisters of the Pleiades, right up here. So this, this is a stellarium view, one thing I like, I enjoy is, uh, first of all, the Pleiades are, are very bright. If you, they're, they're about a one point five or one point six magnitude, which is like a first magnitude star or second magnitude at the least. And so they're pretty easy, you can see them from, uh, you know, in town and stuff like that, pretty easy. But I like watching it, it's one of the first things you see of the winter stars, I consider, Taurus part of the winter stars. And so in the fall, you'll see, uh, the Pleiades come up first over the horizon before the rest of the winter stars. So that's kind of a nice harbinger. And actually, the Pleiades were a harbinger for a lot of cultures. Uh, there's a lot of different, uh, stories, I, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Yeah, they do. Uh, and what? Okay, so Taurus is the, is the, uh, what, is part of the winter, winter stars, the winter hexagon. And there's, uh, it actually, this is the brightest time of the year as far as stars go. And, uh, uh, you've got a hexagon shaped figure there with all these bright stars of all the bright stars in the constellations. And, um, here, here's the star starting with Alder Baron, which is in, uh, in Taurus. And then up to Capella, over to Castor and Polux, down to Perseion, Sirius, and Rigel, and so you've got your hexagon. Then you've got Betelgeuse in the middle. Actually, out of the top twenty-five stars, eleven of them are, are in the, uh, yeah, eleven of them are in the winter hexagon. And these are Betelgeuse, Ad Hera, which is, um, lacks about point oh one magnitude being first magnitude. Castor is not first magnitude, but it's up there next to one, I always think of this first magnitude at one point five eight. Bellatrix and El Nats, which we'll talk, which is in Taurus and, uh, Ariga. Also, a very bright star in the top twenty-five stars. Okay, here's the painting I was telling you about. The oldest known depiction of Taurus, about seventeen, they think it was, it was done about seventeen thousand years ago. And this is in a, a cave, a cave over in France. And, uh, you can see the bright stars in, uh, in Taurus, of course, there's Alder Baron, which is a, a red giant. Uh, it's a point mag- point eighty-five magnitude, which is one of the brighter star, sixty-five light years away. It means the follower. And just like I showed you a minute ago, what it does, it follows the Pleiades up into the sky. So that's, that, that's one reason they give for being called, named the follower. Something that's, um, but your constellation names are, are Latin or Roman. Almost all your star names are Arabic. And, uh, so, uh, so that's why it's Arabic, the flower, but almost all your star names are Arab. Um, it's also Alpha Tauri, which Alpha means it's the brightest star in the, uh, constellation. And, uh, when they did it back in the sixteen hundreds, I forget who did it, Baer maybe? Anyway, made Alpha the supposedly the brightest, Beta the second brightest, Gamma the third brightest, and on, on down. Well, lots changed since then, and, uh, uh, some constellations have been broken up and stuff, so it's, it's not all Alpha stars are the brightest star in the constellation. It has Exoplanet, which we're gonna be talking about, I guess Sean's gonna be talking about tonight. It's Jupiter-like, and it's known as Beta Al- Alder Baron. And it's also got a twelfth magnitude companion, I like double stars, but I had never tried to find it. And it rotates, uh, in every five hundred and twenty days, it's showing lots faster right there, isn't it? Uh, El Nats, which is the, uh, also shares, uh, um, is shared by Capella, I mean, uh, by Ariga, one of the few stars that's shared between two constellations. It's the blue giant, it, it means the budding, which like a bull would butt. It's Beta Tauri, which means second brightest, and it's shared with Ariga. Uh, the third star is, um, Gamma is Prima Hyatum, which is not, not even close to being the third brightest star, like I was saying, they're not, it doesn't always follow that. Of the bull's nose. And, uh, it's made about a hundred and fifty-four light years away, and it's the first of the Hyades. And then, uh, the third brightest, I mean, the next brightest is Alcione, which is a star in the Pleiades. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, along with the Pleiades, Pleiades is four hundred and forty light years away. One of the seven daughters of Atlas and Pleone, I'll talk a little bit more about the Pleiades, I found this interesting. Tiang, Tianguan, which is another important star, because it's one of the bull's horns. And it's also how you find the Crab Nebula. It's the fourth brightest star. And it's, it means, it's Chinese for the celestial gate. And, uh, I've actually traced out the celestial gate before, because it's part of the alternate constellations uh, for other cultures, uh, thing. And it was pretty interesting, um, but, um, it's a blue giant, and it's also a spectroscopic binary system. Uh, celestial objects in, uh, important celestial objects in Taurus are the Pleiades, of course. And the Pleiades are, let me, let me, uh, back up just a second, because this is a good chart to talk about how to find Taurus Bull. Okay, you find, to me, bet, best way to find Taurus Bull is to find Orion, because I think everybody can pretty much find Orion. They recognize the three belt stars and the square shape, square shape around it. And you ta- and you take Orion's belt and go to the west and go right through the Hyades and Alder Baron and on to the Pleiades. So that's the easiest way to, to identify Taurus to start with. Um, and you see the Pleiades are, uh, then the Hyades are the V shape that make up its nose and face. The Crab Nebula M1 is, uh, is the green spot up there by Delta or, um, Tianguan, one of the horns. And so that, that, that kind of makes it easy to find it when you're looking at it with, through a telescope. But it's not easy to see all the time, you need, uh, you need some fairly dark skies and maybe a good telescope to see it. You see it in a small telescope with really dark skies. We'll, we'll show it again in a minute, the Crystal Ball Nebula, which I was hoping some, one of our photographers had taken a picture of, but I didn't find where Chris or Danny had, and, and they're usually where I get most of my pictures from. And it's a, it's, it's up above the Pleiades. Uh, it's not shown on here, you just, you, you'd need to look it up in a ma- on a map. And another one is, uh, T Tauri, which is a, uh, a variable star. Variable stars have, uh, start with the letter R, uh, when they started them, and then they R S T, so it variable star found in Taurus. And what, while Mark did is it's a, it's a class of variable stars. So it was the first one they found, and, and what, and it's new stars, it's stars that are less than ten million years old. And that if just, they, they have an accret- they're having a cre- a desk of, of stuff before the star forms. And then, uh, as the star forms and when it finally blows off the disk, then, uh, it, I think that's when it becomes a T Tauri star right before that. So, uh, they're really young stars. And, uh, I just wanted to say that right now, Mars is, this is to, this is to die, tonight, Mars is between the Pleiades and El Nats, one of the horns. So, and something I forgot to point out right here is this blue line that goes through there, and that's the ecliptic goes through Taurus. And that's where the, uh, planets, the moon and the sun follow the ecliptic, of course. And so that's why we see Mars, oops, Mars is right on the ecliptic right there. And I put this in there just for John Reed. This is a, because he's our poet, or, or, uh, club poet. Many a night I saw the Pleiades, rising though the mellow shade, through the mellow shade, glitter like a swarm of fireflies tangled in a silver braid. So Lord Tennis. And, uh, there's a lot written about the Pleiades, the Pleiades is what actually got me to observing stars back when I was about ten or eleven years old. I went out and outside and it was straight, I guess it was in the wintertime, it was straight up above, and I said, what is that? And I went in and, and got an old, uh, like a nineteen forties, uh, set of encyclopedias and found a star chart in it and figured out what it was, so. Yeah, it does look like a dipper. But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, um, mess you, mess up your mind here in a second about the Pleiades. Okay, it's four hundred and forty-four light years away. It's the brightest measurier object and the nearest measurier object to Earth. Consists of hot, blue, luminous stars formed in the last hundred million years, so it's a new, fairly new cluster. The Japanese name for the Pleiades is Subaru. And there's more than seven sisters. And, you know, we've always heard seven sisters, then I've heard you can only see six. And, uh, I didn't realize this till I started looking at this last night, but, um, they show eight, well. Yeah, I don't know, but anyway, that's, 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 that's in, um, Sky Safari, that's how Sky Safari has it, and I couldn't find, uh, Stellarium didn't have that information. Anyway, I thought that was pretty interesting. Yeah, yeah, well, and one of them's, uh, you, you know, it's, it's six point four one, it's probably not visible even in real dark skies. Plus, it's too close together, you'd have to see it through, through binoculars or something. The Hyades are a hundred and fifty-three li- light years away, they're about six hundred and fifty million years old. And, uh, some of the, um, you know, really bright stars, and I don't know, I, I try not to think too much about how stars work and all that, but, um, the hotter stars don't live as long as the, as the dimmer stars, the dimmer, they, they burn up their gases a lot faster. And so these yell- yellow stars in the Pleiade in here and are starting to burn, they're the brighter ones, but they've become brighter, and they've burnt, they've kind of moved into the next phase. Something else is Alder Baron. It's not part of the Hyades, the rest of the stars are part of the Hyades. But that's a very close, uh, open cluster. Oh, yeah, with, with, um, uh, Mars in it, too, I guess. It's a distinctive V shape. Uh, it's the nearest open cluster, named for the five daughters of Atlas and the oceanid Ithra. So they're the half-sisters of the Pleiades. The Crab Nebula is very interesting, it's about sixty-five hundred light years away. And it was the first measurier object, it's M1 in seventeen fifty-eight, it was discovered before that by somebody else. But it's actually remnants of a supernova that was observed in ten fifty-four. So this is within recorded history, you might say. Uh, and it's recorded by the Chinese and also Native Americans. Actually, in some of their drawings, they think that, uh, some of, that they show that. So they, they recognized it, uh, back in ten fifty-four. It lasted about two years, and it's actually visible in the daytime. Right now, the, um, Crab Nebula has a pulsar at the core, and a neutron star is spinning at thirty times per second. I miss, it emits all kinds of, uh, waves, gamma rays, X-rays, and frared radio. And there's been over thirty mel- elements found in it, it's, uh, it's been one of the most studied nebulas, and they've learned, learned things about our universe from studying it. Crystal Ball Nebula, which is the, is, I don't have it on here, but it's in that area. And it's a very pretty, uh, planetary nebula. Twenty-two hundred light years away, and, uh, been a lot of nice pictures taken of it. Now let's get, get into mythology. Uh, this is a artifact from ancient Mesopotamia, and it's, uh, Gilgamesh and the, and the Bull of Heaven. And Taurus was, was sent into battle by the goddess Ishtar to battle, battle Gilgamesh after he spurned her advances. So that's a, that's a lot of the mythology and a lot of things, it's, uh, something about sex, but anyway. Greek mythology, uh, Europa was the, uh, first queen of Crete, and she was riding on the back of Zeus, disguised as a white bull in Greek mythology. And, uh, the story goes that, uh, she was on a beach with so- some of her sisters, and, uh, Atlas liked her and, and, and was posing as a white bull in, in her father's flock. And she liked the white bull a lot, so she started petting it and stuff, and, and eventually climbed up on his back. When she climbed on his back, uh, Atlas or, or Taurus jumped in the water and swam to Crete. And there, he set her up as coin, as his, as a queen, and having kids and stuff, having lots of little goddess kids and stuff. And, uh, um, but anyway, uh, oh, I lost one, I had a University of Tennessee slide in there. Because the University of Tennessee, even back when I was there, had a statue of the Europa and the Bull. And evidently, I, it didn't get into my last version. But, um, uh, it was there when I was there in sixty-seven. But it's pretty neat. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is, is last year, anybody got any questions about Taurus? Or comments? Okay, last year we had a measurier marathon, and there's been talk about it already this year. Well, in this, this one, Astronomy Magazine, they have, uh, winter measurier objects, and what they're, what a mini meas- measurier marathon. And what they're posing is that you, uh, go out and look at the winter objects. And you can get done before midnight and, uh, make that a, you know, that's a, that's actually a challenge that you can probably achieve. There's not too many people achieve the full measurier marathon of a hundred and ten objects. And I've done it twice, and I stayed up. Well, I didn't stay up, I went to bed and then got up again. But, uh, last year, Mike and I were the only two that, that stayed up all night. Yeah, but my, he was taking pictures at the same time, he's got Yeah, but my, he was taking pictures at the same time. He's got a good excuse. We had a terrible morning though, because it just got real hazy and washed out. But the, the goal is to see the, you know, all the winter objects before midnight or after midnight, but in one night. And so that's something you can achieve. So I think that would be actually as much. And then we could have another one for spring objects, another one for summer and another, another one for winter. I mean, for, um, fall. So anyway, that's just a proposal if we wanted to do that, instead of a measurer marathon, because, you know, people come out for the measurer marathon, but very few people make it all night. That's all I've got.
Just sounds like a bunch of bull meat, Rocky.
How long have you been thinking, getting ready to say?
All right. And our next presenter, uh, is Sean Hartley. Sean, are you ready?
Uh, yep.
All right, we'll be watching.
See my screen? All right. Hi, everybody. Uh, I'm Sean Hartley. Um, I know, I know most of the people in the room that heard there were some, some new people too. Um, and so, uh, this, this presentation is, is, uh, on exoplanet detection. Uh, I was working with Doug and Bruce, uh, with, at the, uh, RT. And, uh, to, to look at some of the data, uh, to submit for, to the AAVSO. And, uh, so they, uh, just wanted to do a presentation on using Astro Image J, which is the software that we use, uh, or is a modeling software to generate light curves. And, uh, but before we jump right into the software, I wanted to go over a high, the high level process and kind of the ecosystem that goes on, on how exoplanets are, uh, detected and confirmed. And how you as a, a amateur astronomer can contribute, uh, necess- needed scientific data uh, to, for the, for the discovery of exoplanets. So an exoplanet is just a, a planet that's outside of our solar system. And, uh, there's a, there's a, uh, a, a couple of ones that have been discovered. Uh, Kepler sixteen B is like Luke Skywalker's planet Tatooine in Star Wars. Uh, it orbits a pair of stars. And, uh, there's, there's many multi-star systems in the universe that are observable, you know, nearby in our galaxy and in other galaxies. Um, and they don't, they all orbit a common center of mass called the Berry Center, which we're going to talk about here in a little bit too. Um, another, another planet is, uh, Trappist one E and, um, it, it's a, a, uh, an earth-sized planet. And there's also several, uh, other rocky planets that have been discovered in the, the same star system. So, like I said, an exoplanet is, uh, any planet outside of our solar system, but it may or may not orbit another star. Um, there's, there's known exoplanets that are rogue planets that are hurtling through interstellar or intergalactic space. And they've been ejected from a star or perhaps they, they formed without a star. And we, we don't yet know of a process that does that. But as of January twenty twenty-three, there's three thousand nine hundred and sixteen confirmed star systems in our galaxy with at least one planet. And of those almost four thousand star systems, there's fifty, five thousand two hundred and forty-one planets distributed amongst them. And then there's a queue of nine thousand one hundred and sixty-nine exoplanets that are waiting to be confirmed. And the confirmation process for confirming an exoplanet usually involves, uh, or involves, uh, the James Webb Space Telescope and, and powerful space-based telescopes following up uh, to, to try to detect a light curve. So here's a, a couple of other exoplanets. Kepler one eighty-six F, uh, is the first, uh, or was the first earth-sized planet discovered that's potentially in a habitable zone. Um, but the star that it orbits is a lot cooler and redder than our sun. Um, if, they speculate that if, if, uh, plant life exists and it's photosynthetic, then it would operate, you know, for a lot redder light than what we have orbiting our star. And then, uh, the, the other, another planet that's been discovered is a, a PSO J three one eight point five dash twenty-two. And it's, it's a rogue planet. Uh, it was discovered in twenty thirteen using direct image imaging. And, uh, it's, it's hurtling through interstellar space. It's very cold and dark on that planet. So those are, those are a few of the, uh, the planets that have been discovered. And these, uh, these, these cool posters are put out by NASA's Exoplanet Travel Bureau for anyone that's wanting to look for a, a cool exoplanet vacation spot. Uh, but how do we go about, uh, observing and detecting a distant exoplanet? It starts with a distant eclipse. So as a star, uh, is an object passes in front of a, a star, it dims measurably. And this, these two images on the left with the initial brightness in the passing object are exaggerated in terms of the, the width that the star changes. Um, most, most of the changes that are, that are observed are within, you know, uh, ten percent. Um, so this one, this one is, is, is a pretty good, it, it's for demonstration, but on the, the right, uh, this is the GIF of, uh, WASP twelve B, which is an exoplanet. And that star right there is WASP twelve. And so all of the two hundred and seventy images on the stack, uh, were combined together and are on an animation loop. And you can see that that's actually, uh, the brightness that it's, it's changing. Um, so to, to, to measure brightness, that's, that's kind of the, the way that we want to be quantitative about, about, um, what's changing. And to do that, we draw an aperture, which is a circle around a star. And then we count up the number of pixels within there and we add the values of, of all of the pixels. And then divide by the number of pixels in that area. And then that gives us the, the metric for brightness, right? And so, uh, to measure a star that's changing brightness, we use comparison stars, which are not, um, which are known not to be changing. And so even if a cloud or something like that passes in the way, or there's some fluctuation in the atmosphere, um, these stars will change proportionally to it. But whenever this is, you know, there's an object passing or, you know, in the case of like supernovas, stars could get brighter. You know, and it was, it was growing. Um, you would see that there was some change in the brightness of the object, you know, that was, that was proportional to, to whether or not there was a cloud in the way. And so, uh, a, a lot of our people in cast are, are, you know, taking images, pretty pictures of the sky and they're, they're using stacking, um, to, to average out an image. Um, and, and we expose more detail to it. But another application that you can do with the same image stat is go through, you're still taking a sequence of images with time. But then you draw an aperture around a star of interest and you measure that, the average brightness in that aperture compared to comparison star. So you get a metric of brightness. And so if you plot that brightness with respect to time, what you'll see is, is there's a, a change in the brightness. And, um, this corresponds or for an exoplanet, what we're looking for is, is for an object actually pass in front of the star. Um, there's, there's a lot of different false positives. For example, you know, another star could pass in front of another star, um, that, that have to be ruled out before just, uh, the, that we know that it's this, this case, but, um, what it, what it looks like is, is, you know, as, as you have a star, uh, and a planet orbiting it, the, the brightness changes with respect to time. And so this is a, a light curve of, uh, WASP one B that we, uh, the, the imaging was taken by, uh, Doug Wilson. And, um, uh, we did the, I did the data analysis on it. And you can see that this was the, the change in brightness. It was only by about point two percent. But that marked the transit's ingress and egress. The ingress is whenever the planet starts to move across the disk. And it, it's, it's the same thing as a lunar eclipse, you know, whenever we'll see the eclipse in twenty twenty-four. You know, there will be a point whenever it starts to move across it. Uh, there will be a point when it's in the center and there will be a point when, when it's, it's off. The depth of the curve gives a notion of how, uh, big the object is, how wide it is. And then the time between the ingress and the egress gives a notion of how fast it's going, which is, is what we use to determine the orbital parameters. Whenever they're, you know, in the process of verifying that there's a planet there, they need to determine its, its mass, its radius. And then how, how far, what its orbital inclination and, uh, uh, distance from the star is. Um, those are, those are parameters that, that the light, a light curve tells us the, the radius and the, uh, the orbital, uh, speed. Uh, but to determine the mass, uh, we actually, it, we can't use a light curve. We have to use, uh, a spectrograph, which measures the, the amount of, uh, red or, or blue shifting. And the reason, uh, that we're able to do that is because, you know, we talked about, uh, earlier, there was a, uh, that multi-star systems that orbit a common center of mass. This is true for any objects that are orbiting each other. They orbit as the, a point called the Berry Center, which is the center of mass of the system. And so the Earth-Moon system, you might, you might think that the moon is orbiting the center point in Earth's core. But that's not true. There, there's a Berry Center that's about seventeen hundred kilometers below Earth's surface. And so Earth's core is, is actually revolving around that too. And the, in the moon, uh, is, is revolving around that center. Um, here's some, here's some different views of, of what a star and a large planet look like orbiting a common Berry Center viewed from the top and viewed from the, the, uh, the side. Um, whenever the planet's coming towards us, it has a higher apparent speed, which is called the radial velocity. And then whenever it's moving back the other way, it has a lower speed. Um, and so that, that gives a Doppler shift effect. You might've heard of a Doppler shift if you've ever, uh, been parked at an intersection and it's, a train drove by while it was blowing its whistle and you heard the, the pitch of the whistle rise while the train was coming at you and then fall in pitch whenever the train was driving away from you. Whenever it's coming towards us, the light is blue shifted. And whenever it's, it's going away, it's red shifted. And so depending on that radial velocity, how big it is, that's what we need to determine the mass of the planet. And so there's, there's different telescopes that are involved in, uh, determining the light curve and then determining the red and blue shifting. Um, so let's talk about the, the satellites that's involved, uh, with, with this, this data. So, uh, we need to know, we need to know the depth of this light curve, the ingress and egress times, okay, to determine the radius of the planet and how fast it's moving. And then we, then we need to know the red and blue shifting effects. In other words, how, how much mass does it has to cause this, the star to have a, a, a Berry Center, you know, that's further shifted away, which gives the star a higher apparent radial velocity. Um, so that's what we're trying to find out. Okay, but before we start doing any of that, we actually need a source of likely exoplanets. Um, because there's so many stars, you know, just even around us in the Milky Way Galaxy to, 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 to start looking. Um, that was, that was the, the, you know, the first part of the problem is, is which one am I supposed to start looking at? And so, uh, the satellite that kind of starts all of this is a space-based telescope, but it's not near as glamorous as like the Hubble or James Webb, and it's a lot smaller. And it's called TEST, the Transiting Exoplanet Survey Satellite. And it actually has four telescopes on it. Each one of these telescopes have a, a, an aperture of ten and a half centimeters, which is about four and a quarter inch. So you think about your, your ETX ninety, that's a ninety millimeter. This is a hundred and five millimeter. So these are, it's like four ETX nineties kind of, but they've got a really wide field of view of twenty-four degrees for each telescope and their combined fielded view is twenty-four degrees by ninety-six degrees. Um, and so it, it's very useful for, for taking a large, uh, or, or collecting information about a large portion of the sky at once. Um, it sees, it sees, you know, almost one twenty-seventh of the sky at a time, uh, combined between these four images. Um, but the camera that it has on it has low resolution. It has a resolution of twenty-one arc seconds per pixel. And for example, my observatory has a resolution of one point two arc seconds per pixel. Um, so it has a high sensitivity to, it knows that there has been a change in brightness. But the, it, there's, there's a, there's many objects, you know, for example, double stars that are smaller than this. So it creates a lot of false positives. It, it orbits, um, in a highly elliptical orbit, kind of going out towards the moon. And it takes a sky survey, um, for a quadrant every twenty-seven days. And there's twenty-six of them. So, um, every, every twenty-seven days for the entire celestial sphere, uh, you get a collection of images. And then there's a data process that goes through and compares to the previous time it was taken it to look to see, you know, at an image stack. What has changed compared to the previous image stack, right? So they're doing the same thing. They're making a stack of images and they're looking for things that change. And in their, their, they have a high sensitivity to whenever, uh, things are changing, but it's not very precise that it's an exoplanet. It's, it's, and that's where, uh, amateurs like us. It's, it's, and that's where amateurs like us and, you know, using the, the RRO's telescope offers, you know, a way that you can contribute additional data to help validate that this is an exoplanet. Because TESS has, produces a lot of, a lot of, you know, positives, but many of them are false positives. So they need scopes on the ground to go in and do high-resolution imaging, which many of our telescopes that you're using for astrophotography are a lot higher resolution than TESS. After a light curve has been created by an amateur like us, then it's flagged for reconnaissance spectroscopy, which is looking for that red and blue shifting that I was talking about as it goes around the Berry Center. And then finally, it's confirmed with precise Doppler spectroscopy, which is looking at that Doppler shift to give the mass. And that's done by like the James Webb Space Telescope. It's, it's used to, to do these. The Hubble also does it, but a, a high-powered space telescope. TESS has a transit finder that you can use. And, and you can, you can download the data as a, as a CSV file too. But you enter in your latitude and longitude. And then, you know, say the next three days worth of transits. And these are the, the upcoming transits of known exoplanets that they're hoping that someone might image. And so you have, you have finding charts that are automatically generated. So for example, you know, this one, if I click on it, it'll take me to an Aladdin Light leak and it'll show me what star I'm supposed to be looking at. And there's some other ones. It tells you the, the ingress start time, the midpoint, and then the end time, the total duration. And then for the light curve dip, the approximate percentage that you would be able to capture. So depending on your location, some of them, some of them have a very short transits or the transit doesn't occur in, in a time that you can view all of it. But some of them do, and those are the ones that you would want to select for observation. They also give you an apparent magnitude. And then the expected depth as well as the period, which is the time that it takes to go around the star. There's one thing you might be thinking is, is okay, if there's a distant eclipse, how do I know it's not just a piece of random space junk? You know, that traveled in between my view and, and that distant star and caused a momentary dimming. But the fact that it's periodic, which means it keeps happening over and over and over, those periods leave one believe that it's actually, you know, that there's a, that there's a planet orbiting. And so once, once it's, 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 the light curve has been generated, then the next step is to get that, that red shift, blue shift in the Doppler shifting data is, is it, it causes the star to shift about the Berry Center. And so they use a spectrograph. And the same instrument also allows the James Webb to determine the atmospheric composition of these distant planets. Because as light moves through a star's atmosphere, there's known absorption lines in the atomic spectra that correspond to what element is which. And so, so you can look at the spectrographic data. But James Webb also does, generates light curves too for very small objects that are too faint to be seen by even large observatories on the ground. That, that planet that you heard on the news, maybe within the past couple of days, that was their first, the James Webb's first confirmed exoplanet was this, this LHS four seventy-five B. And it's a small rocky planet about the size of Earth in the habitable zone. And, but they actually took the data, you can see in August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And there was, there was a validation process. The, the relative brightness only changed, you know, by about point one percent. This would be very hard to observe a planet this small. I, I, I don't think you'd be able to observe a planet this small on Earth because we have an atmosphere in our way. But space-based telescopes too. And so whenever you're looking at these transits, the depth will give you an idea of how big of a percent change you're looking at from the initial value. So you know, if fifty percent change is, 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 is a viewable depth. Okay, and so now we're, are there any questions about the exoplanet detection process before we start looking at an example of the software with the data? So with the, with the software, we're going to go through and generate a light curve. That's what we can do with telescopes on the ground. No. Okay, the, there's a, a guide for for setting up an environment, you know, and, and using, using AstroImageJ by Dennis Conti of the A VSO. And it, it, it was very useful for, for getting this set up. And so if you, you're looking for a comprehensive guide to get started and get going, I'd recommend that. And we'll look at the example data that they provide with the AstroImageJ, which is of WASP twelve B. So we're gonna touch on the high-level parts of it. And so the first thing I'm going to do is I've downloaded and installed AstroImageJ. You will also need an astronomy plate solver to solve the coordinate system for each image. And so what that does is that it assigns a world coordinate system so that your images in, they, they have a header information section so that they can be aligned, that, that we know what section of the sky that came from. And let me, let me start off with that. So I'm going to use this program, ASTAP to open up a FITS file. And FITS is, is astronomy standard for, for image, images. Let me, let me stop sharing and, and share my desktop. Okay. So I have a, I have a, an image opened from, from an exoplanet transit dataset. And this was from WASP twelve B. This, this section is the header section of the file, which is an information section at the beginning of it. That, that precedes the actual image data. And it has tags inside of it that, that store metadata about the file. Down at the bottom, there will be this section, or there should be a section here, which is your plate solving world coordinate data. If you don't have a, if you don't have it plate solved, which you can see it's, it's, it has these lines. So that's where, that's showing the, the grid for the celestial sphere. If you don't have that, then you're, you, you won't be able to, to otherwise proceed with, with building a, a model. You need to know, it needs to be aligned. Or there needs to be a world coordinate system assigned to each image for pretty much every step in the software after that to work. So the first thing you have to do is set up a plate solver, which we're not going to do tonight. But there is, it is documented in the guide. And if there's anyone that's, or if there's enough interest, we could do a separate section on setting up a plate solver. But after that, you've downloaded and installed AstroImageJ. So you're going to import an image sequence. And so this, this image sequence has two hundred and thirty images. It was taken, I think, in twenty seventeen. It's from, it's part of the, that AstroImageJ examples that I put in the, the the slide. And once it loads, there we go. Okay, so this is, this is what the AstroImageJ image master screen looks like. You can use the the left and right arrow keys to move through the stack. And you can see that over time on this one, that actually it kind of went out of focus as the atmosphere changed density. Perhaps there was a temperature change that was, that was going on. You'll, you'll have an air mass metric that's the ratio of your telescope com- angle compared to zenith. As you, as you look through Earth's atmosphere, the atmosphere is least dense whenever you're looking straight up in a, a normal from Earth's surface, because you're looking through less atmosphere. As you look through, you know, either side of that angle, you're looking, you know, across like a, a longer line through the, through the atmosphere. So there's, there's more distortion. Okay. So we loaded an image stack and prior to processing the data or prior to, to fitting the model on the data, you'll need to make sure that it's, it's calibrated. And calibrated includes the dark subtraction, flat division, and then plate solving at a minimum. Darks, if you're not familiar with those, you need to take a dark by placing a cover on your telescope so that it's, it's, there is no white reaching the camera. And the dark frame tells you what the minimum value is for each pixel. So if a pixel is reading an artificially high value, they should all be reading zero whenever it's perfectly dark. But if a pixel is reading, say, you know, a five or a ten, a lot of, you know, sensors develop what they call hot pixels. Then you, you subtract out any pixel value where the pixel was set hot. And then a flat division is whenever you illuminate the whole. You have a, you have a separate light that you put in front of your telescope and you illuminate. You, you illuminate it so that all of the pixels are reading close to their max value. They should be reading their max value. And if any of them are not, you divide it out. And that removes distortion on the optics. So if you have like a smudge or dust or something like that. And then, and then the, the last part would be to plate solve it. And to plate solve it, ideally, you'll, you, whenever you take the image, if you're using an image program like SharpCap or some of the other ones, there's a, there's a field where you fill in your observatory information. And once that's filled in, it'll write your observatory latitude and longitude, which is the location you took the image into your FITS header. Once you know that, you can come over here and tell it what's the keyword that it used. Because some of the programs use different, different tags for it. But you map that in, and then as you go to plate solve, it'll pull the RA declination and then the latitude longitude out of the FITS header. So I've already solved these. This is a time-consuming process that can take, depending on how many images, an hour or so to load. And what you'll want to do is set an output directory because it's going to save a new copy of each file where the dark and flats have been processed out. And then also the FITS headers have been updated with the world coordinate system from the plate solver. So that's step one is to make sure that the, the, that each image is calibrated and plate solved. Once you've done that, it's time to place the apertures. And going back over to the presentation, just a reminder. The aperture is a, is a circle that you, you place over each star to generate your light curve. So the aperture is this dashed circle. And so I'm going to place one aperture called T one, which will be for my target star. And then I'm going to place two more apertures on two other stars, C one and C two, which will be my comparison stars. Is it processes through the image stack? It's going to go through and add up the average pixel brightness, divide that by the total number of pixels in the aperture. And that's what is our metric of brightness, okay? And as, as we do that for, for each image, we'll see that the target star has changed brightness slightly in comparison to the comparison stars. So going back over here to place the aperture WASP one B, I believe it's. Sorry, WASP twelve B. And then, so that's my target. And then I'll place, I'll choose two comparison stars. You can see it places the aperture. So that aperture is this, the circle that it drew. Okay? And once I have that, uh, those pressed, I'll press enter. And now it's going to start the process of uh, uh, plotting everything and generating the model. And uh, this has got some of the, it saved the parameters that I've used from, from last time. So uh, we'll, we'll talk about how to get some of the stellar parameters uh, into a high level of what, what these windows are. If there's any more interest, we can do another one that's kind of in depth into uh, what this does. But this will take, this will take um, a moment to run. Are there any questions on any of that so far? The classroom or online? Okay. Uh, okay. So uh, right now this is showing the uh, the, the trend line, which is, is you can see that there's a, a small dip. And uh, it had placed the predicted ingress and egress, but I think that it's still using this. So um, to set up your model, you'll need to know uh, some of the orbital parameters that are already known about the star as well as some of the, the host star uh, parameters. Um, the period is the first thing that you need to know. And so if I come back over here and I go to a uh, the exoplanet archive, uh, I can look it up by the uh, the uh, planet ID. Um, so I'll come back over here and looking at WASP 12B. Okay. And so I have stellar parameters which are uh, you know, known about its star. And then I have a planetary parameters, which are things that are known about the planet. So you know, I've got the mass of the planet and Earth's, the mass of the planet Jupiter's, uh, the radius of it in Earth, the radius of it Jupiter's, um, and then the period. Uh, so the first thing I'm, I need to know is the period because the model uh, is dependent on that. So this period should be 1.09. Um, and then we need to know if there is a uh, if the orbit is uh, is circular or not. Um, I think this one is, this is circular. We'll, we'll say it is for this one. Okay. And then uh, you need to know the host star parameters, the temperature. And then the other stuff, I think it, and then the radius, once you know the temperature and the uh, radius calculates mass. Okay. Um, so there, there are different parameters that uh, you can, you can plot. This is um, the, the, the expected depth of the transit, uh, the semi-major axis, the center time and the Berry-centric Julian date. Uh, whenever we're measuring the time aspect of it for these, um, in the time is, is using Berry-centric Julian date, which is uh, uh, looking at the sun's uh, time around its, around our solar system's Berry center, right? Um, and so uh, yep, you, you, you put in these parameters, you make a model. Uh, and then after that, you've got, you've got a screen where you can, you can go in and you can tell it, uh, you know, what to plot for your Y data and your X data. And uh, you generate a plot that has the, the light curve, right? And so this will tell you what the uh, the percentage is. Uh, it tells you the depths in parts per thousandth, right? And this should be what you expect to see on the um, the transit page, right? They tell you what the expected depth is. Um, talking about false positives though, uh, tests, test is, is uh, sensitive, but it's not precise. So just because there's a transit there doesn't necessarily mean that it's an exoplanet. There's, there's a lot of follow-up observations to, to, that are, that are going to happen with space-based telescopes to determine, you know, the mass of it with the Doppler uh, shifting. A lot of us don't have spectrographs available as an amateur, but you do have a uh, CMOS camera that you can generate a light curve. And so the goal of using Astro Image J is to generate a light curve uh, that predicts where your ingress and egress times are going to be based on this stellar parameter information uh, that you feed your orbital parameters and your host star information that you, you feed into your model. Um, and so at a high level, that's, that's the, the process that I went through for, for processing the data for the uh, RRO. Any questions? Everybody walk out? I can't, it's already offline. I'm, it's people. I can't hear you if you're talking. You might have to go to the microphone.
Say, you measure from half maximum to half maximum of the
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the full width has maximum is the, is a measurement on uh, Astro Image J. Uh, this will, this will measure uh, a lot of uh, aspects. Once you have uh, the, the images plate solved. So um, let me get back over to it. Um, oh, let's do like this. So once I have it uh, plate solved, I can right-click on any, any object in it, and it will open the corresponding uh, Simbad uh, page um, to do the uh, with maximum. I have to, I'd have to look at it. Uh, Michael, um, I would have to look at it, Michael. Uh,
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it later.
Show us, show us your results and explain to us what,
what you're seeing on the chart.
Okay, um, sure. Um, so we'll talk about the uh, the RRO um, image. Let me, let me open that up. I can show you what I was looking at. While I'm doing, while that's loading, uh, I'll show you the results. So uh, you can, you can plot a lot of uh, of, of components about the, about the, the aperture as it changes. Uh, so this midline right here, uh, were bend uh, uh, brightness values from the target star. And then these green triangles are the change in the width of the target star. Um, and so you can see right here in the middle of the transit, the width is changing the fastest. Right? Which is kind of, right, which is maybe, maybe what you would expect. It's, it's peaked at that point. And then uh, this, this, this should actually be inverted, but the air mass was, was, was going down as the uh, the, the telescope approached zenith. Alright, so let me open this and then uh, I will open it. So the basic idea is, is whenever you have this uh, multi-plot wide screens, this is where you fit your model and uh, you'll, uh, you'll come over here, you, you determine, you know, hey, or which, which column is going to be plotted, what the X dating is. These are all using uh, the Berry-centric Julian as default. So this is, you know, just a time series data. Um, and then uh, and then I have uh, uh, two of my uh, brightness measurements for T1, which was my target star. Uh, one is subtractive and then one is uh, fitting for the uh, the uh, transit uh, eclipse. You can, you can, you can, you know, you change the shape and the color through the graph. Uh, but the, the, the main thing is, is that you're, you're using a standard fit model. AAVSO is providing, uh, I, I don't know that they, they, VSO is one of the validators that that the community has agreed upon that this is, this is how everybody should submit their data. Um, and I was looking, I, I, well, I have this pulled up actually to invert the uh, air mass. But you can, then you can, you can plot your other uh, D-Trend parameters. So for example, you know, you can, you can look at the, the width of your target star compared to your compare, or two comparison stars. Uh, you can get an idea of your, your uh, sky background per pixel, which is, is light pollution, uh, air mass, which is the density of the atmosphere as your telescope points, you know, away from zenith. Um, your total C counts, uh, which is uh, the uh, oh, I don't, I don't remember what it was. I'd have to go back and read the documentation. This is, this was, this was the, the RRO's uh, exoplanet was, was the first one that I processed. So you can probably get pretty far as a guy if you put your head to it. Um, so at a high level, what Astro Image J does for you is uh, is, is provides a, a pipeline for, for calibrating pitches. And then uh, fitting a standard model uh, and producing a graphic to use for the AAVSO reports. Uh, you can also output the AAVSO uh, from it. The uh, uh, oh, one more thing I was going to show you, um, that I had to do for Doug's data specifically. Um, and the uh, the data processing step. There was a tracking error uh, and, and the mount the, for the, for the data that came out of it, the uh, the, the mounting quit tracking correctly. And so the image had been shifting and then the tell, I, I guess there was a stop and a recite. Um, and uh, one of the neat things about Astro Image J is I, once you have the world coordinate system solved, you can tell it to move the app or to keep the aperture at that same RA deck value. And so if your images have any shift, it'll move the aperture around with the star, you know, to, to correspond with the world coordinate system. And uh, and uh, yeah, it was in the aperture place. You can uh, use RA deck to locate aperture positions. So once you, once you've, uh, once you've so once you've solved everything and you have the world coordinate system, let's say there's a little bit of variance, you know, in your telescope, it, it wasn't quite always pointing at the target. Maybe you stopped in the middle of it in the four-hour imaging session and did a recite and you know, the next set of images, or maybe you had a Meridian flip. Okay? And uh, you had a stop in there. Um, you can, you can check this and it'll move the aperture around the image stack to keep it centered on that RA deck value, you know, even if your images are a little bit off, which was, was necessary for the uh, uh, RRO images. They, you know, I'll show you that, what the image stack of that one looked like. Um,
How big a drop was the uh?
I, I can't, sorry, what was the question?
Sorry, what was the question?
How big a drop in this particular series did you see from the planet's transit?
Let's see, this one had a depth of nineteen thousand point zero five parts per thousand. That may be something that that you would have to ask Doug, what the expected value was from the. Swarthmore site for the test data. It would depend on.
But you bet you measured nineteen nineteen thousands.
Yeah, so that would be. Ninety nine point. Nine. Or eight, nine, one, zero, five. I don't know, yeah. I can't do that.
Small. And the ingress and egress were actually a little. The ingress and egress were a little divergent from what was predicted.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, the, the, the problem was, the problem was, is like. Is it was going through, you see how how the image is shifting? Like this was the star that we were measuring right there in the middle. Do you see as I'm going through the image stack? Here's the count of the images up here, how the image is moving around. So it was causing a lot of variance. What I, what I did to to kind of rectify it, just to to see the the data, you know. Through the noise, because Dennis had commented that. There's a lot of noise in the data was I bend it. And so I did, you know, I think is every ten data points went into a bin. And after I've been did it, it it fit the the expected model a lot better. So Ben for the for the layman is just taking is is taking an average. So it's like, I take the first ten points and take an average of those and that becomes point one of the bin set. Then, you know, for the next ten points, they, I take that average and they become point two. So these bigger, these smaller dots right here were the individual values. And then the value is this larger dot. So the bin value looked a lot closer to the to the model. There was, there was less noise.
Well, thanks for sharing that with us.
Yep.
Is there any other questions? The question was, is who gets to name the planet, you or John?
Does it matter if they have names? Can name it whatever you want.
It'll be a number, right?
Right? They may have already had names, we're just not aware of them, right?
Well, thank you very much, Sean, we appreciate you. Your hard work in a presentation. Rocky, thank you very much for your presentation. I guess Catherine. Will have your presentation next time. I don't know if you're on. All right, well, folks, thank you all once again. Was there any new people that came in after? After we we started here? All right. Would you like to introduce yourself, young lady? Yes, ma'am. Aaron and Christina, okay. Well, we're glad y'all are here. Thank y'all for coming out. And I guess this is a wrap up for our our January meeting. And. We 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 might be able to find something for you out there, candy bar or something.
I was going to say the. Basically, the summary, what Sean was talking about is that amateur telescopes can now measure. And detect exoplanets. And the program he was using Astro Image J is a free program. It was developed for initially for the government and the NIH. And it's free on, you just go to the NIH site and download it. And it's actually one of the best image analysis programs. I used it a retired UAMS professor and I used it for my microscope data to make it quantify. So you can do it with the same thing with the telescope.
Anything else, folks? All right, well, thank y'all for coming out once again. Hopefully the skies may have cleared up out there, I have no clue. He saw the transit of the space station. Well, we're going to try on the clear skies, right? Okay, well, that's a wrap for January and thank y'all very much for coming out. I hope everybody got to sign the clipboard as it went around. And for all of our new guests and new members, we're glad you all are all here. And we look forward to seeing y'all next month, if not up here during the month. Thank you. Oh, we have a public star party in March at Woolly Hollow and I don't. Another one in April at Woolly Hollow and then we'll have some at Pinnacle Mountain throughout the year and. If not, you can look on our calendar online. It is all posted on there and we look forward to seeing all y'all out there. Thank y'all once again.